Thank you all for speaking. I believe I can say on behalf of the board, especially to the students, thank you for coming and participating in this endeavor. It is truly appreciated that you took the time out this evening to come and speak. And I hope you stay until a decision is made. I know some of you may have other things to do, so if anyone needs to leave, please feel free to do so. Is there any correspondence, Joan? I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I need to approve the consent agenda as amended.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second? A second by Jennifer. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Megan, will you, or Dr. Carlin, who's speaking on the math curriculum?
You know, I believe we shared with you last time the evaluation we shared with the North curriculum. And it was just an update from what we had done the year before. We talked a little bit about the modifications that were made and how those modifications were going in the classroom. So we're just awaiting that decision.
I would just add that a thank you to the math committee members. I think the group that has been working on that for quite some time, as well as this recommendation went through the district's curriculum council and the TSS leadership team and was reviewed by them. And the recommendation is to approve that as our K-6 math curriculum.
Is there any discussion on the math curriculum?
Remind me, did we talk about getting a quarterly report back, or was it a half-year report back on how the process was going? I can't remember. Or was there ever?
Well, I think one, I think a comment was made that it would be good to get some reports back. I think it might be a little unrealistic to get something quarterly. I mean, certainly that's gathering that kind of volume of data may be challenging on a quarterly basis, but what we'd like to do is probably bring you back something annually, not unless there's problems, and then we'll bring you some back more frequently. That is a baseline. We don't report on most of our curriculums on an annual basis, but with the board having an interest, I think that's something that might be a good starting point anyhow to see how it's progressing after another full year of implementing that. But it's your choice. If you, it's just gonna, it's gonna be very close.
I want it weekly, but yearly's fine. I just couldn't remember. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't asking for a report if they weren't due. So at the end of the year, you know, I think some of the discussion that we had was that we really want to watch that and make sure it's a good program. So a yearly program would be great for me.
And you will be hearing more frequently about our overall math program as we start to put some pieces of that in place. That's one of the things that Ms. Scott's working on. And, you know, we had our math summit, I think we shared with you a few weeks ago, had some notes from that, but we're in the process of putting together the pieces that will come into place of our overall math program. This curriculum is one piece of that math program. So it's not like you won't hear about math. As a matter of fact, we'll be back in April with the seventh through ninth grade curriculum recommendations. So you all might be kind of sick of math by the time we're done with all of these.
I actually would prefer to see something at the end of, you know, fall semester and then again at the end of spring semester. I feel like an entire year would be, or just one annually wouldn't be sufficient to make any modifications that might come up. I feel like-
Are you speaking of subjective data or objective data?
Both.
Is it, I don't know if we would have objective data that semester. You don't think we would?
Some have aims we have. Assessments that we share with you three times a year. Surveys, we're having a hard time getting people to take surveys because we're giving them so many. So I don't know how relevant that would be.
Do you still feel like the aims is the appropriate test to go with this curriculum? And I know there was some discussion during some of the meetings that it wasn't, I didn't know how relevant it was, I guess.
We're starting to see some good foundations. I still think so, and I think that'd be of interest to you guys, so we could be, maybe we'll share that.
I think we just want as much information as we can possibly receive from you on the status of how this curriculum is progressing or how it's progressing. And I, I feel confident that that's gonna be supplied to us.
Just, just following up on the last board meeting comments, that, you know, it's so encouraging to see the whole process that we went through, the professional staff in evaluating, trying to come up with that curriculum and have it implemented. And it's also a brave new world on the standards that we're being asked to meet. And so that together with just the anxiety of any child missing a semester or a year of math is, is a lot of pressure. But again, counted out with a lot of good process and a lot of professionalism. So I'm encouraged by all that, but I'd certainly like to, and I sort of echo that, boy, we wanna stay on top of this and get feedback. Last board meeting, I think when we talked about this, we reviewed all of the adjustments essentially that have been made from the sort of stark implementation of New York Math with fidelity to latitude or freedom to teach. Coaches, working with the teachers, getting coaches in the individual buildings. It's pretty good stuff. And even though there's a lot of anxiety still about the standards, I think we're on the right track. And we certainly though want to take steps to be sure that nobody misses out on math.
Well, I think the overwhelming support by teachers at faculty meetings, basically begging us not to change again because there was such a learning curve at the teacher level for the first year. And now the second year, things are going so much more smoothly, and it would be very hard to go through another complete rebuilding year. I think the teachers, from what I've heard, are in support of it, and they're the experts, in my opinion, and they're the ones that are using this material. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move forward with this curriculum as presented. Is that a motion? I'll still like comments, guys. Yeah, but that is a motion, just to approve the K through six elementary math curriculum as presented. Is there a second? No second?
The motion's going to die if I don't have a second.
No second. Jeanne, you have some comments?
I do have some comments. I would like to see more feedback more often. I think, as Dana mentioned, you know, at the end of each semester would probably be sufficient for me. I don't expect a 60-minute briefing with 100 PowerPoint slides and, you know, lots of data and numbers and everything. But I do want to have a sense that we are going in the right direction and that we are not missing the mark on, on the results here because I think we do the process quite well. We have committees, we have meetings, we have seminars, but I want to make sure that the, that the results that we're getting from this process are what we expect and what we would want to see and that we're, that we're, we see that there is a need for changes or revisions, that we attend to that immediately and not wait an entire year to maybe tweak something that really should have been tweaked mid-year. So I, I would like to see this, this come back to us maybe twice a year. I think that probably sounds like a good timeframe at the end of each semester. It's a good period of time for the teachers and the people working with it to kind of assess how it's going and to have a fair trial. I, I do appreciate that the math teachers want to have some continuity or consistency in the program. But I would also say that that is of value, but that is certainly not the only thing that we should be looking at. And if there is some, some major issues with this program, then continuity alone is an insufficient reason to continue with something that, that simply isn't working. So, so I want to keep working with this, but I do want to have more information and consistent information. Math is simply too huge an issue and too important to our students' learning to, to not pay attention to it and work with it and get feedback on it frequently. So, and I know that you're aware of that. I just, and I certainly trust all of you and the math teachers, but I think that's just such an important issue and such a critical issue in the district that as a word, we really should have received that frequently.
And I just can ask one last thing. And for me, it's not just how are the students doing, but it's how are the teachers feeling that their training and professional involvement in that area is being provided? Because that is, to me, that's just as crucial information. Are we giving teachers the support that they need to be confident to teach that? Because that's gonna, you know, that's gonna impact the results, the, the test results as much as they think. So I'm not talking just necessarily student success, I'm talking just how do our teachers feel?
One of the modifications we made last year was, we knew that we didn't have enough math coaches. And we're stretching them a little thin this year, but we do have a math coach in every building, not as much as we would like for them to be there. But I think we're starting to see that some of the misperceptions that we had, you know, with math are being answered this year because they do have a math coach that they can go to with some of their questions. And I don't know if you guys want to address any, any things with that. We have some math coaches here, and they're in those buildings every day, so.
I'll speak as a teacher, if that's okay. I spoke to you guys last month. I think the coaches have been really great in helping us. I always think there's room for more professional development, no matter which subject or area you're in. Everything's constantly changing, so I think there's always going to be help with that. But I think you guys all hit on very good points. I know data's kind of hard to collect all the time. We're in the classroom, and that's really hard. But I respect that you guys are respecting us as professionals and really thinking of this thoroughly, so thanks for that. But these guys do great for us.
One of the things I brought up, and I promised a third grade or fourth grade teaching that I would mention this tonight, too, was the parent component. Apparently, there's also a component and part of that parent component. So I'd like to apologize. Apparently, I have been getting math newsletters. They're in this desk. I apologize. It was emailed to me the next day. So I realize that that's been going on. I'll work on the kids' side.
Anyone else?
I just want to make sure that we're not going with this simply because, like you said, the teachers, we don't want to change again. If it's something that's not working, I don't want to stick with it just because it's another change. The data's been presented to us, and I think that's important, but we also need to look at the, the kid's side of it. And, you know, we can educate parents and educate parents, but if there's a point where maybe that's a, maybe the curriculum's not user-friendly. It aligns with the standards, and that's important, but is it most beneficial for the kids? And I just, I've talked to teachers that have liked it, but I've also talked to several that they've really struggled with it. And it's, it seems that it can be so standardized or that it's hard for that flexibility for those teachers to teach in their own way. And I know that we've looked at adding some modifications, and I think that's important. But we really need to look at whether the curriculum choose are friendly and what's best for the kids. And I don't simply want to stick with it because the data or the research that's done that's been presented from different organizations says the best, but was that research done in the classroom? Was it done with, working with different types of kids and different types of teachers? And I just want to make sure that it is, that choose are friendly, and that kids will enjoy math when they're finished from school and don't want to continue that. There's, I've looked at it from a parent's side, and I've talked to other parents where there's a lot of frustration with kids, and I just, I want them to like math. And I want teachers to like teaching it. And I just want to make sure that that's one of our main objectives, too, not just aligning the students.
Anyone else?
Someone was gonna say in the discussion phase, I think Jeanne covered it, and I just want to reiterate it, that, that I, I know that we need to plan our schedule through a lock of years on what we address and what we don't address so that professional staff can have the confidence that we've got to say an adopted curriculum. But I don't, certainly don't view this as a six-year commitment. I mean, it's a commitment to get that in place and it'll be there, sort of in our tradition of reviewing. But again, if we find out that this isn't working, we just simply put it on the agenda and we deal with it.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, so there's been a motion and a second to approve the K-6 elementary math as presented. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Norby, did you want to give a summary of past presentations for us with regard to the seven-period day?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you, before you guys leave, could you all please stand up who are on the math committee? I'm assuming you're all standing. I just want to say thank you.
Before I get going, I, I want to recognize the students that came and spoke today. Took a lot of character to, to do what they're doing and to stand up for what they, they feel is best. And so, you know, I appreciate that, guys. We have talked in the past and will continue to, to talk things through, especially the four of you sitting there on the far end. You know, we've had our discussions and we'll continue all the way through. I also want to recognize a couple of staff. I guess Ms. Simpson's left. Mr. Bijou is here, Mr. Tone is here. They were on the seven-period day committee as, as faculty members, and I appreciate them coming and being here tonight. You know, this has been a two-year process at Garden City High School and a discussion that's at least been a year long in the making with students. Reports from Buffalo Broadcasting presenting information last spring, editorials in Sugar Beach. You know, this, this has been a topic of conversation for quite a while at our high school. And I, I'm glad the students trying to get informed and, and express what they, what they feel. But we've been pretty open about encouraging students to ask questions, express their opinions. We've had, like I said, the article in the newspaper, the story on BBS, class assignments around a seven-period day. Mr. Kip's been around in many different classes to visit with kids. I've visited with, with students who've come to me and asked about seven-period day and what that might mean to them, and, and will continue doing that, including the, the recent establishment of a 12-member Student Council Committee that will be right with us all the way along the possible implementation of a seven-period day. Each, each step, they'll have a seat at the table and be able to get information, bring it back to students, and help us disseminate information all the way, all the way throughout the process. And I, I don't have the 12 names of the students who signed up in Student Council to be on that committee today, but I appreciate their leadership for saying, I want to be a part of this. And we've got freshmen all the way, all the way to a lot of juniors who are about to be seniors, and I do appreciate that. But to summarize what we found all the way along, our main advantage is daily contact with students. And you've heard that again and again and again tonight. Dr. Carlin, no pressure on you, but if we get a snow day tomorrow, odd classes will not have met in a full calendar week. They met last Thursday, didn't meet today. We don't have school tomorrow, they won't meet, won't meet Wednesday. They'll meet again Thursday. And I just don't think that's good for kids. They need that daily contact. Remember what we did a week ago? Some kids may not have been there. It may have been longer for some of those kids. It's a long time. More overall time with teachers and students collaborating. 100 minutes every other day versus 85. Told you last time, I've got the best students and the best staff in Kansas, and getting them together for more time can't be a bad thing. The potential for deeper learning with that extended time. The potential to just build and build and build on what you've learned instead of meeting twice a week, meeting five times a week. And just the pure maths of lower class sizes makes that teacher-student relationship even deeper. Those have been the consistent themes that our teacher committees and our administration feels are the benefits of a seven-period day. As we've talked with students, as we've heard different concerns, you know, we've tried to address each of them, and some of them were concerns or issues that we have been talking about since the very start, that we recognize these are issues that we'll have to deal with, but a lot of them are issues now. One thing I wanted, want to make sure I clear up is that some students had come to me about the issue of, someone's told them somewhere, they've heard, that we won't be offering college classes at the high school anymore. That's not true. We will offer the exact same college classes in the, with the exact same teachers that we have already, that we've been offering. Ms. Scott is our liaison with the community college. She's talked to their administration, and we will have the exact same college classes offered, and you will get the same opportunity. Early graduation was a concern for some students. That's still there. That's still there. So students would be able to graduate with 24 credits, three full years, plus some extra night school work, which they have to do now. That option still on the table for all students. Missing work for activities was mentioned several times. And yes, students might miss classes for activities. They do now. That's a concern right now with the amount of travel. That's not a new concern, is students missing work for activities or missing classwork for activities. If a student should happen to have a ballgame or something on Thursday or an activity or a doctor's appointment, it's going to be more than a week since they last met with that, those teachers. That's a concern that we live with right now. So that's not a, it's not a new concern, it's just an old concern in a different way that we have to address. Another concern I heard was too many tests all at one time. I think that's always going to be a concern for kids. I think our teachers working together in PLCs, we can mitigate that. We can work to address that. We know it's a concern, it's out there, it's what's been a concern each presentation that I've made. So we recognize, yes, that, that's something that we've got to make sure that, that doesn't penalize kids as they move forward. But the number one concern is the loss of, of an elective. But as I've told you in a couple of different presentations, we've got options in place to, to mitigate those concerns, whether it is zero hour, not taking an elective zero hour, perhaps a core in zero hour. So you can still take four electives during the day. Eighth hour and night school, that's also. We've got virtual options where students can take classes online. So we've got options there. What I want to do is encourage students to go visit with your counselors, go visit with principals and see how these might work for you. Because we're dedicated to making sure that the impact on students and the change of our schedule is as minimal as possible and still giving them the options to engage in the electives that they love so much. One of my areas of focus as a principal was to promote student engagement in the school and in their school environment. And this fall, our kids have done a magnificent job with their building culture and taking ownership in their building. They've done great things. As you've seen tonight, kids have an interest in their school. And I encourage any of them with concerns to approach any administrator, doesn't have to be me, or any counselor, to start getting a plan in place. I've heard from some kids and counselors who have been working to get a plan in place. And the early returns have had very good results for the students. So I want to encourage that. Having addressed our, our advantages, where we think there are advantages and concerns that we recognize are out there from, from students, and we have recognized those concerns all along, we know that there are concerns. There are concerns right now in our schedule. I'm asking the board to take the action that we proposed as far as changing our credits for graduation and the implementation of a seven-period day.
Ms. Norby, you in the past have addressed our concern that some classes, for example, culinary or chemistry with a lab, zoology, for example, that was brought up tonight, some classes would be better served to be extended. Are you going to be capable of modifying the schedule somewhat to account for those needs?
Yeah, we've asked each teacher and have told them, they will get a chance to build their schedule as they see fit. I've had some, some teachers come to tell me, ah, I really don't think I need that. I've had others come tell me, yeah, I'd like to talk about it and to see what the effects are going to be. We're in, we're in the initial stages of constructing our master schedule for next year, which is why the timing of this is very important to us. But the teachers for each of these subjects are going to be able to drive how their department and schedule are going to look. It is a blank canvas. They get to have the input about how they think things will be best, best developed as far as classes. Mrs. Gurney and I talked earlier today about perhaps differing, differing types of block classes for advanced students, but perhaps not for the lower-level students, maybe the seniors, having something that might be double-blocked, since a senior may only, in theory, have to take a half a credit of English and government to graduate, so they'll have a lot of different electives potentially that they could take. So doing something a little different for them. That's going to be teacher-driven, it's going to be department-chairied.
Do you feel you have the leeway in a seven-period day to accommodate those teachers' needs without knowing, without having contacted each of them? Do you feel fairly certain you can accommodate all that?
I think so. I think it's a conversation that we've got to, we've got to take a look at all of our different resources, whether, like I said, whether it's early or later or virtual options. We're gonna, we're gonna take a look at all of it.
Okay. Because I know that was something that each student brought up, and that's a concern of mine as well.
Can I make a real quick statement?
Sure.
I just, I just, to help explain with the modification and things. With my senior class, I would love to have a double-block, so they have more time to go out there and do things. My class is a year-long. They could make it a semester class with two hours to make it a, still a full credit. And then that would leave the next semester for them to take another class. So some of these, there's a lot of modifications that they are able to do that's going to be probably easy enough for them to do to allow us to do these double-blocks for our students.
My instruction to staff was, anything's on the table.
And that's what I'm happy to hear. I just want to make sure that it accommodates as many specific events as possible.
No, I've done, I've done the master schedule at the high school for a couple of years now, and it's been an open-door discussion with department chairs all the way through. They've always had the discussion about who's going to teach what, what we're going to offer based on the, the kids requesting different classes, and that's not going to change.
There was a comment made that the zero hour wouldn't be official.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what that means, but as far as not a definite thing, maybe that's what you mean, as far as zero hour not being a definite. It, it will be. We will have classes offered, core classes offered zero hour.
For cred.
For cred, absolutely. The discussion right now is between whether or not we'd be offering language arts credits during the zero hour or social science credits, because I've had teachers from both disciplines ask me, could I please teach that class? So whether it would be, and we are planning on a sophomore-level class and a junior-level class so that kids can, no matter what their classification is as they go up, they would get, they would get that option. Yeah, so we are, we are planning, we have a certain number of overloads that we can use at the high school for teacher schedules, and we're planning on using those for those opportunities in addition for perhaps sliding schedules of teachers who may start a little earlier and then end their day earlier. Once again, everything is up for discussion.
Can I ask a question? You said you double-blocked classes, so would it be like first and second, you have one class?
Perhaps. That, that, and that's dependent on whether the teacher would like to.
So it means we lose two electives.
Yeah, depending on what the teacher would like to, you, you might lose an extra elective if you took a double-blocked class, but that would be up to the student, the teacher, and the counselor. And then we would give you opportunities to make those up virtually or other.
Yeah, that's a question. What time would zero hour start in the morning?
Well, at current start- Well, at current start time of our school day, that's 7:00 a.m. And then goes to 7:50.
What I would ask is if you have specific questions with regard to how schedules or anything like that would work, is if you could talk to Mr. Norby, perhaps after the meeting or give him a call or email.
Please do. As we design this, we're, say it one more time, we're going in with no preconceived notions. And sometimes the comments and the concerns are based on the old way we've done things. Well, as we're making the shift, everything's up for consideration. Let's, my instruction was to staff, let's build the schedule that we think, just ground-up, works the best for teachers and kids given the parameters of our time. And so nothing is off the table. We'd even talk to certain departments about, does this mean we might want to add a certain class or delete some classes from our offerings? And so those are all up for discussion. Curriculum council may be a busy place, Ms. Scott.
Any other more questions?
I have just a comment from Mr. Norby. You know, this has a lot of attention tonight, but you told me nothing new tonight that hadn't been already presented two other times before. So I appreciate you keeping us abreast of kind of what your thoughts are in this process. It's been going on for a long time and there's been a lot of discussion. So I don't want anybody to think that these specific items haven't been discussed and mulled over and tossed around. And this isn't a knee-jerk reaction or decision. This is something, like Mr. Norby said, has been in the works for a couple of years now. But I would say the last six months, we've been apprised of tweaks and concerns and potential changes, potential roadblocks, almost weekly. And so you may know and other avenues of communication with the board. So I just appreciate none of this being a surprise tonight to us since we're going to be making that decision. So thank you.
We've been consistent with these things. These are the advantages we really stand on. The daily contact, more overall time, potential for deeper learning, lower class size. We've been consistent with those. Those are things that we really believe are going to be benefits of this seventh-period day. And, you know, we've been, we've been working on this and delivering that message since Mr. Kip first went to PLCs last April and started talking with teachers.
Could you say just a little bit more about this student, 12-member student engagement group?
Yeah. Student Council has formed a, at my request, a 12-member committee that will meet with me regularly each step along the way as far as developing a class schedule and what this might look like. And so they will get a chance to come in and look at our big board and talk about what each of these components means. Making a master's schedule is not the most exciting puzzle in the world to put together. Some of them may have wondered, some of the kids may end up wondering, "What did I get myself into?" But we asked for volunteers, they responded. And so we will be setting up regular meetings with them to talk about not only issues in the schedule, but also then how do we communicate with their classmates?
Questions for Mr. Norby? Any discussion?
Excuse me, I'd like to make a comment.
I'm sorry, time for public comments is over, thank you, though.
Madam President, I'd like to move that we adopt the seventh-period day at Garden City High School.
There's a motion to approve the seventh-period day as presented. Is there a second?
And with the curriculum or credits of... And the board policy change for graduation credits.
Would you accept the amendment and second that as well? I think what I'll do is just go down the line in case there's any comments, if that's all right. Tim, do you have any final comments on the issue? Mark?
You know, what's best for kids has been reiterated time and again. And that's been the process of deliberation on alternatives for an alternative calendar. And fundamentally, we just want to make sure that we give the kids what they need to be successful beyond high school. And our professional staff has come up with a way to do that. And I just think we can take some comfort in the flexibilities and in the from-the-ground-up approach at implementing the seventh-period day. And so I just appreciate all of that process and the comments. I do have one big regret, and we addressed it last meeting. And that is that the teachers have got now multiple passing periods every day to deal with as far as doubt control, not just the teachers, but the principals. And so that'll be a factor we'll want to pay attention to. And I'm sure they're sensitive to that. But in that planning, that planning time that teachers would have that will have to be diminished in order to accommodate this is something we've got to continue to look for ways to address.
I'd like to address the students first off that came tonight. I just do want to say that you're not too young to have a voice. And I don't want you to feel like we don't value what you have to say and wouldn't consider your information in making a decision. This has been a really long process. So a lot of the concerns that you guys brought up, we've talked about them. We've told, you know, and it's not to say that we don't have some of those same concerns. Whenever you change something, it's not going to be perfect. The block schedule is not perfect. The seventh-period may not be perfect. But something needs to change because students are not being successful in very important areas. I totally understand your concerns. I've had some of them myself and other ones included, talking about teachers losing planning time. It's not, it's not easy, but it's something that we've talked about for a very, very long time. And that, over time, I was convinced that we should try this and go with a seven-period schedule. So I really, I hope you guys will continue to be involved. And just like we asked for, you know, evaluation and information and how this is going with curriculum, I feel the exact same way with what's happening, what will happen possibly at the high school. And I would value your input all along the way. You know, what's happening, what's going well, what's not going well? Because that's invaluable in making decisions. And your voice does matter. You're the ones that are, you know, it's your education. So I'm so happy to see that you are standing up and wanting the best for yourself and being proactive and assertive because that's exactly what we need from young people. So I just really do want you to know that. I appreciate that. It's not something that you're not being heard.